Okay, it's now seven o'clock. We'd like to welcome you all to this public hearing held at 80 South Superior, Cambridge City Hall. I think we need to begin with a pledge of allegiance, if you could.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the place and time scheduled for the public hearing regarding some city ordinances that we've been working on. Ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-five subdivision regulation, design standards, lot requirements. Ordinance number six dash twenty twenty-five zoning regulations, commercial zones permitting permitted uses in commercial zones and minimum lot requirements for residential use in commercial zones. And ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five zoning regulations, specific areas, district requirements for specific areas, districts, including Central Rush Creek Overlay Zone. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony for and against our proposals. But before we get started with testimony, our staff has a presentation that we'd like to present to kind of help everybody understand things a little bit, and so we'll proceed with that.
So anyway, we thought we'd be about just a little bit of information at the beginning and try to help answer some of your guys' questions before we begin your testimonies. One thing is the main ordinance, I suppose most of you have questions on, is the overlay district. And we started working on this six months ago or so. We were trying to figure out something that would help create affordable housing especially. And nationally, they've instituted overlay districts, and there's some in Idaho as well. And that's a way to give different development options to a certain area without necessarily changing their zoning. So one thing to consider is if you're zone residential, you're going to stay residential. If you zone commercial in that overlay district, you will stay commercial. An overlay just goes over on top of it, and it gives special standards for just that area that the overlay's over. And some of the things that are the main changes for the overlay, for those standards are higher densities. Right now, we only go up to seven. This one would give up to fourteen.
We'll go up to six. Six per, six units per acre, and this will take us up to fourteen units per acre in the overlay district.
But we aren't changing E D U's. About a year or so ago, we implemented E D U's. But basically, they won't be based on densities. It'll still just be based on what you have in currently in your zones.
Sandra, he might give a definition of an E D U for some that may not know what it is.
Accessory dwelling unit, like a mother-in-law's quarters. Something like that. And we have a whole section of code on that. You can go online and read that whole section of code or call me. Another thing that's changed in the overlay district are the setbacks, more lenient setbacks than in the original zones. To be able to give more infill, that's kind of the idea of it, to try to take an area for affordable housing, you know that there's a crisis. People have to have a smaller area because a bigger area is much more expensive. So we're trying to find an area where we can have infill to have higher densities. And one thing they usually want for a district like this is that it's walkable to main services and towns. That's one reason that section of town was looked at, because it's walkable to the post office in downtown and the areas. Another thing is it already has apartment buildings in it and stuff that actually is a little bit higher in densities already to the thing. So I'm going to read the boundaries of the zones so you can understand exactly where it is, maybe. Maybe I'll hold this one up, maybe that you can see, and he's going to help. Would it be better to outline this? I was going to say on this, maybe they can see where things are just a little bit better. So you know for sure what is in the overlay zone. So the overlay zone that is proposed is this blue area right here. And so at the beginning, and this is the legal stuff for it, beginning at the intersection of East Central Boulevard and North Commercial Street, heading northwest along center line of Central Boulevard to the intersection of West Central Boulevard and the alley between North Second Street and North Third Street. From two twenty West Central Boulevard, heading northeast on North Second Street, encompassing both sides of North Second Street to the center line of Rush Creek. From ten West Central Boulevard, heading northeast on North Superior Street, encompassing both sides of North Superior Street to the center line of Rush Creek. From forty East Central Boulevard, heading northeast on North Commercial Street, encompassing the westerly side of North Commercial Street to the center line of Rush Creek. So that's the area that is proposed for the overlay zone. So Cory's going to give you a little bit more information on what the changes are in those proposed ordinances.
Oh, I am? So, well, like we said, we're looking at increasing density, lowering the setbacks to five feet on all four sides. Let's see. The minimum lot size standard that we have right now for residential is seven thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. This will bring it down in the overlay district to three thousand one hundred and eleven for a minimum lot size. No more than fourteen dwellings, dwelling units per acre. And that's where we come up with the square footage for minimum lot size. See, the maximum height allowed would be thirty-seven feet. Currently, right now, in residential, it's thirty-five; in commercial, it's forty-five. And I think that is the main differences.
We might mention that parking is addressed in the ordinance, that in that area, a garage can count. You have to have two off-street parking places, but the garage can count as one of those. But you would be required to have two off-street parking places.
Per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
As I mentioned, our goal is just to try to find a way to make more affordable housing in our town, and real estate seems to be the biggest barrier at this point, just the expense of real estate. And so that's why we've come up with this overlay district, to try to make smaller lots so they can be more affordable, so work for it. So our goal is to make workforce housing affordable, so we can have people that live in town can afford to live here and afford to work here. And so that's what we're going, that's what our goal is. We don't want to, I mean, I would imagine most all of you own property in this overlay zone, and if you don't want to do anything with your property, that's great. You don't. But at the same time, these ordinances give you way more options on things that you can do with your property if you desire to do things with your property. And so that's, that's what our, our whole premise is on what we're trying to, to do here. So with that being said, we'll kind of, we'll proceed on with the hearing. Will the clerk please read the notice of public hearing as advertised in the Upper Country News Reporter, the city's legal newspaper?
Notice of public hearing. The City Council of City of Kew reports from Camden, Idaho, and your comments from the public concerning the proposed adoption of ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-five subdivision regulations, design standards, law requirements. Ordinance number six twenty twenty-five zoning regulations, commercial zones permitted uses in commercial zones and minimum lot requirements for residential use in commercial zones. Ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five zoning regulations, specific area districts requirements for specific area districts, including Central Rush Creek Overlay Zone, at seven p.m. on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-five, Cambridge City Hall, East South Superior Street, Cambridge, Idaho. Copies of the proposed ordinances are available at Cambridge City Hall during regular business hours, emailing cityclerk@cambridge.id.gov, or by calling City Clerk Samon McKee at two oh eight five five oh five nine one. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing to express their views regarding these ordinances. Oral testimony may be offered at the hearing. Anyone who wishes to comment but is unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments prior to the meeting to City of Cambridge City Clerk P O Box two twenty Cambridge, Idaho, eight three six ten, or email cityclerk@cambridge.id.gov. City Hall and the council chambers are accessible for persons with disabilities. Any person needing special accommodations to participate in the meeting should contact City Clerk Samon McKee at two oh eight two five seven three three one eight at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Okay, each person who wants to be heard will step up to the microphone right over there and identify themselves for the record and express their feelings concerning this matter. Although no one is going to be administered an individual oath, all persons giving testimony will be doing so under perjury, or under penalty of perjury. This hearing will be recorded on an audio recording device capable of being transcribed, and anyone desiring to have a copy may obtain a copy at their expense. This is not a courtroom, and no one will be subjected to cross-examination, although the commission members may have a few questions of the people who give testimony. The commission members will entertain no questions. If you desire to know how an individual commission member stands on the issue, you are most welcome to attend the meeting, which will follow our hearing, which will be on Monday next week, and listen to the commission and discuss their discussion and observe their We have two letters that were sent in. Should we read those first? Dan, would you like to read that one?
This is Gary and Sharon Martinez. To whom it may concern, we are a married couple living at one fifty North First Street and have several concerns about the ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five. As we understand it, this ordinance will allow changes in the Central Rush Creek Overlay Zone for density development on the lots within that zone. The individual who bought the lot directly across from our property at North First Street has a desire and a right to build upon and improve that lot. We do not have an objection to two single-family homes, no duplexes, being built there, but we do have an objection to more than two homes being built for several reasons as listed below. The drainage problem on North First Street is bad. Large pools of water form each spring all along the street when the snow melts, and it takes days, sometimes weeks, for it to drain away. Even with only two houses built on that lot, there will be less land to absorb the water, therefore, more runoff. Second, North First Street itself is in great need of improvement. What pavement that is left is cracking and splitting apart more each year, and has a lot of dust, and a lot of dust is raised with the traffic we already have, plus hay trucks, farm equipment, et cetera, used for a street, and this is not a truck route. As a bypass, therefore, again, more wear and tear, more density, more maintenance. Two houses will mean an average of two cars per house, or could be more, but we know that many people have more than two vehicles, especially if side-by-sides, RVs, boats, et cetera, are included. Add those vehicles to the traffic issues I listed above, and the maintenance that is already lacking will be further behind. Finally, we believe the neighborhood children deserve the freedom to ride their bikes and play on a mostly quiet, safe street like North First Street. If it gets too crowded, parents will be hesitant to let the kids have as much freedom because of traffic alone. If you vote, we take our concerns seriously for the sake of keeping our safe, comfortable neighborhood intact. Sincerely, Gary and Sharon Martinez.
Sandra, could you read the letter from Deborah Stoll, please?
To whom it may concern, persuaded to the letter only City of Kew that the infill in the Rush Creek Overlay Zone should be handled with much care. The placement of water and sewer lines and the additional meters that egress access for new properties in the size of the new lots. The infill should allow a dual-size lot that can be used for at least a double-wide mobile home with a minimum setback from concrete lines and enough rooms for off-street vehicle parking. New lots should also be able to have a dedicated driveway, not shared. Any homeowner that owns a legal two or more C V lot should be able to infill existing lots as long as the existing structures allow for a legal lot size. Thank you for your attention to these suggestions. Cambridge is a lovely old town with great people, and I would hate to see that change. Sincerely, Deborah Stoll.
Okay, that's all we have for written testimony. We'll begin with testimony for Darren Brown. You first on the list.
My name is Darren Brown. Most of you know me. I grew up here. I was born in nineteen seventy, and my grandparents owned a ranch out on Cove Road. And my dream my whole life has been to start a business in Cambridge, Idaho, so that people like me could stay in town and live here and not have to move away to Boise to find a job that they could afford to pay to raise families and stuff like that. When I graduated from high school, logging was getting ran out by the spotted owl. There just wasn't any really good paying jobs around, so I had to move away. My dream was always to come back and start a business where people could afford to live here. I see Linda Keller here. Her husband Larry was a mayor of Cambridge for a while, and one of her sons, Ron, was one of my really good friends. And I can remember when Larry was the mayor, he used to say, "My dream is to be able to have something where kids will be able to stay in town and not have to move away and find jobs in other places." So I eventually was able to do that and come back and start a construction company and have a lot of people that are able to work for me, and some of them can stay in town. But right now, there's no place for anybody to live in Cambridge. And so when I first came to the city, we went through a list, did a presentation on all the houses in Cambridge that are gone, that used to be here, that have fallen down or got tore down, or in such bad shape that you can't even, you know, you can't live in them. And, you know, I've got an employee that drives from Kuna, I've got an employee that drives from Caldwell, I've got an employee that drives from, from Ontario, and it's just, there's just no place that's, you know, that, that they can live. I've got guys that are living in RV, you know, in RVs and just go from RV park to RV park. And so we decided that we were going to try to buy something in Cambridge. You know, we love this little town. It's been, you know, our town our whole lives, grew up here. My family's, you know, been here their whole life. So we came down here, we, we bought a piece of property and wanted to build a couple really nice houses on them so that our employees would have places where they could live. And we started going through with the planning and zoning, and the way the lots were laid off, laid out at the turn of the century, fifty feet wide, I believe, and a hundred feet long, they're just long, skinny lots. Hundred and forty-two feet long, so they're long and skinny. And it's kind of like these buildings down here, like Franklin Electric and the grocery stores, they're all, you know, just a fifty-foot front and then a long, skinny building in the back of it. And I don't know if the, the guy who originally did the planning and zoning and built the city grid was thinking it'd be like New York with all the city buildings or what, but that, the lot sizes just don't really lend themselves well to, to building houses on them, you know, in a, you know, without just wasting a lot of space or, or just having a long, skinny lot. And so with the offsets and what we were trying to get done, we finally asked if there was, you know, what they could do to help us come up with a way that we could afford to build houses on that lot without having to spend three hundred thousand dollars for a piece of property before we even tried building really nice houses on it, because we're not billionaires. I mean, we, we don't, you know, we're not naturally rich. And so going through a bunch of these, these setbacks and stuff like this, this is kind of how this has evolved. And I think Mark said it best when he said that, you know, this doesn't mean everybody's going to go down and doze their house and everything's going to change overnight. It just means that you have more options with your piece of property if you decided you wanted to build a house closer to one edge of it, or build it a different direction, or actually build it square instead of long and skinny, and not have fifteen acres of grass for one house out in the middle of it if you're, a lot of people work for a living and aren't just, you know, they're not worried about a big garden like they were, you know, in the fifties, or a big lawn. They just, they just need a place to sleep at night and then go to work every day. You know, the, the businesses, one of the things, when we went through all the houses that were gone, we talked about all the businesses that are gone, the, you know, the banks, the Buc-E's Cafe, the motels, the Hunter's Inn's gone, the list goes on and on. And the tax revenue, you know, there was a lot of stuff listed about the problems with the city street there in that one letter. You know, my comment on that is, you know, if, if you want to raise your tax base to where you can be able to afford to improve the streets, or to pay for the new water system that you have, you've got to have, you know, houses on lots or people living in the city in order for it to pay the taxes, in order for it to, you know, to expand or to improve. Most of the changes that they're, that they're making, a lot of them are just reducing, like reducing how close you can go to a property line one direction or another, and I don't even know that they're that. Like the side, what was the side offset originally before it got changed?
Ten foot minimum.
And now what is it?
Five.
You know, so it, it's not like a total astronomical change. You know, they originally said you had to have twenty-five feet from the front of your house to the property line so that you could park your pickup in the front of your house if you wanted to. And so, you know, that's one of those, what, went from twenty-five to nineteen or something like that? So it's gone down six feet. You know, so a lot of the stuff that they're doing are, are smaller, or not, not as drastic as somebody might think. And the other thing is the way these, the way they've adjusted the square footage of what a lot has to be is, if, if you own a lot, you, you won't go out there and break it into fourteen lots, because the math doesn't work out that way unless you buy all the lots beside you and try to fit a certain size lot into it, is what it does, is it allows you to change the areas in your lots for the most part, so that they're, you know, so you can fit wider houses on streets. Like if you go down to new subdivisions in Fruitland or, or Payette, you know, the front of the house is kind of the wide part of the, the building that you see, and they're not as deep. All our lots up here are skinny and, and long, so it just allows you some options. So I guess that's, I'm, there you go, my support is for it, so.
Thank you. So we have for it, testifying against, Tracy, you're first on the list.
Yeah, I'm on this one.
Okay. Okay, from this point, we'll go on to neutral comments. Donna Coyle, you're at the top of the list. Don't want to? Okay, Linda Keller, you're next. Don't want to? Kate Noah.
I can understand the need for the housing, but the space and the packing things in for the, most, all of us are, own our property, own our houses in that area. And to me, it just, the only turn I can come up with, it feels like it'd become the low-rent district. And that, I don't mean an insult to your workers, Darren, or any of that, but it just, it's, it just would, we like the space. I like the space that's around the houses that are out there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Catherine, you're next. No? Jesse?
Yes.
Okay. David Stark?
Yeah.
Me?
Is David Stark here?
Yeah, he's right there.
Mike? I can't read the last name. It's Mike Stark of the NAM.
Oh, there we go. I understand the need for affordable housing. But the problem I have is if you're going to build it, then they should be paying to upgrade that part of the streets, the sewer, pay something for the expanded schools, because if we start doing that, we're going to need more students. And if we need to expand the sewer, that should be paid when they develop that property. If they change it and develop the high-density housing, and you've got a third more people, you're going to need that stuff paid for. I don't want it on my bill. The person who are making the money develop it should be paying those. And that's the only point I have about it. Thank you.
Right here.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with building. I have a problem with the density. You have every right to build two single-family units on your property. And I think all of us agree that if we want a density, we live in Kuna, we, we live in Napa and Boise. I moved up here because of the freedom and the space, and I don't believe we need it. But you have the right to build your two single families. If you want to build stuff for your employees, build it out of your place. We had to live with the density. We don't want to. Thank you.
John Erickson?
My second. Gary's comments. The horse should be owner-occupied. You know, if you want to build something, you got to own it. If you get, I mean, standard rentals, have it, own and sell them. That way, you get somebody that's got some skin in the game out here.
How do you know these won't be owner-occupied?
Well, if they're owner-occupied, this home on there, owner-occupy it, you know? If you're going to build it, or build a couple and sell them, you know, but a bunch of rentals just, it's not why I moved here either. I'm living, living right next door to it, to that one lot. I don't know if there's any other lots that are worrying about, or is it just the one that's across the street from Gary and next to me?
Well, it's just going to be that whole area. I mean, there's potential in that whole area to do, for property owners to do anything they would like, you know?
There is potential, but, I mean, I'm not into it. It is what it is, you know?
I've got one more in the comment, too. Cessie moved that double-wide mobile. He hasn't done anything to, hasn't taken any measures to clean it up. One of the neighbors had to come down here and complain about the weeds. He didn't take care of them until complaining. He could have at least gone in and picked up the cement blocks, made the place look a little more improved, and nothing like that's happened. If that happens now, what's it going to be like later on?
Bill?
Me?
We need to have everybody state their full name, too, so Sandra knows who's up there.
Well, I'm not much of a speaker. Oh, wow! But I'm pretty hard of hearing.
Bill, please take your name for the record, your whole name.
Why you, oh, Bill McMenus? Anyway, I live next door, and I can understand what this man's trying to do, but... Anyway, I live next door, and I can understand what this man's trying to do, but he can't tell me that he's doing it for his employees. There ain't no way. He's got too many investors behind him for this deal. Three houses is crazy. If you wanted to build three houses, why didn't you get a permit, do it out on your ground? Do you live in the city limits? Excuse me? No, you don't. You want us to put up with this? Do you know how many cars that most people have per family? Look on the block. They can't even plow the street. They got three apiece. That'd be nine? Maybe they got kids. Maybe they got tw-. No, you want to build two houses? That's fine, but three? Uh-uh. There isn't room. You know that. You just got to change your plans because it's not practical. I can understand anybody wanting to get ahead and do this thing, but three houses on that little lot? I mean, I got the same-sized lot. This would mean I could build an apartment building out in my front yard. Is that right?
Well, I don't know. I don't know about smart.
Well, I mean, but, I'm sorry, but, but three, build two, but three, that's, it's not practical, and you know it. Anyway. Sorry.
Hayden and Michaela? You guys going to do it together?
No.
I think he signed it thinking it was Simon.
Oh, okay.
It says Simon, you hear.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, that's all I had on the list. Is there anyone else that would like to testify concerning this, our ordinances that we've set up? This is your only option, your only opportunity to do it. Either you speak now or just hold your tongue because this is it. You already spoke. So the city council, I'll instruct them, this is the testimony for this hearing. If anybody tries to speak to you about this before our meeting on Monday, you need to dismiss yourself and walk away. You can hear no more testimony on this, this hearing. One last time, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
On any of the ordinances, correct?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, if you want to speak on any of the ordinances listed, now's the time.
Will you send us a notice on your decision?
Well, we have a meeting on Monday. You can come to that meeting on Monday, and you can hear what the council decides to do, and you can hear them vote. Okay? Anything else? Nobody wants to speak? I declare this hearing closed.
I might, too.
You already did.
Thank you for hosting the hearing.
You bet.